The designated time for the meeting having arrived and a quorum of members having also arrived, I will call this meeting to order. And I think that the very first item, actually I came up here so rapidly I didn't put the agenda in front of me, but I think it's the approval of the minutes. Is that correct? Oh, roll call.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Okay, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan. Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Smythe.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
Okay, the roll having been called, I'd like to ask if anybody from the floor would wish to speak during petitions and communications. I don't think we have any slips up here, but we're certainly open to public participation either now or at the time of the discussion of the item that we have. Okay, having no requests for petitions, I'll ask for staff presentation.
Good evening. Tonight's discussion on licensed hauler operating hours is a continuation from a council discussion in January. In January, staff presented a number of options for a licensed hauler operating hours ordinance. Council's discussion did not conclude in any particular, in favor of any particular option. Subsequently, staff was asked to craft a more narrowly focused licensed hauler operating hours ordinance, and that's what's in your packet today. The memo starts with a potential amendment, and then follows with three GIS maps that show, first, the individual council wards. So councilors were interested to know in our previous discussion whether there were complaints arising from within their wards. The red dots are the location of complaints regarding early morning garbage collection. There are more, or there have been more complaints than are represented in these dots, but we do not always receive an address or an intersection, and so some complaints we're not able to map. Additionally, there are a couple of those dots that are really right on top of one another, so there's about two more than you can actually see at a glance. Next, on each one of these three maps is different sizes of licensed hauler operating hours restriction zones. Staff was asked to draw a zone that might be subject to a start time for garbage collection based on where we are actually receiving complaints. And so there's three maps that have three different sizes of that zone encompassing a greater percentage of the actual complaints. Those follow with the existing compliance and enforcement statutes, or sorry, ordinances in the section of our code that would be referenced and utilized for such a licensed hauler operating hours restriction. And then finally, a note on enforcement. Enforcement of such an ordinance would likely come in the form of being complaint-driven. I don't foresee public works staffing inspectors at 5:00 and 6:00 a.m. all that frequently, and so we would likely take complaints and respond to those complaints, you know, in the form of a letter potentially to all the licensed haulers. As such a violation could be fleeting and very narrow geographically, we may not have the ability to, say, catch a violator red-handed. So staff is seeking mayor and council direction on whether this particular scenario is desirable, whether another type of licensed hauler operating hours restriction is desirable, or whether maintaining the current status of our licensed hauler requirements is desirable.
Comments or questions? Diane.
I had a question. How many different companies were the subject of these complaints, and do we have specific information?
Sometimes the particular hauler is noticed, is given to us in a complaint, sometimes it's not. So we get a great variety of what ends up getting recorded. So sometimes they hear a truck or hear a garbage collection, but it's 5:00 a.m., and so they don't get out of bed to look and see who it is. Sometimes they see a truck driving away and can't identify it, and then on occasion, they do pass, the complainant does pass on the name of the operator.
Well, there's six or only six or seven dots here, so do those represent, would you say, six or seven different companies, or mostly one company?
I don't have the database that we record these on in front of me, but it would be speculative because there are a number of them that have no hauler name next to the complaint. So it's hard to say whether they are all the same company or different companies.
I think just to elaborate on the answer, I know from some of the previous meetings when the haulers have spoken up, some of them may start later in the morning, you know, i.e. six or later in the day. Some had mentioned how, you know, one may start as early as midnight, others in the earlier hours of the morning, so some obviously wouldn't be in the case because they don't, they're not hauling at 4:00 in the morning or something, so.
I wonder if it would be possible to project the maps that we're looking at so that the Okay. Right. So you had three options, and maybe we could look at them one at a time, yeah? And Eric? Yes, Dennis.
Yeah, thank you. So Diane was asking how many haulers, companies would be involved, and you said that some of the dots represent more than one experience of a complaint at a certain location or nearby location. So can you tell us how many complaints came in total?
We have about a dozen in our database, so we get a couple a year.
A couple of year, a year.
So I know that some city councilors receive complaints, but sometimes those don't make it to us.
And maybe Charlie, since you were, this is kind of one of your concerns, you can express, well, how a couple complaints a year can kind of create the interest that we have here in this topic.
Well, it's because it starts with one, and then other people chime in on the listserv. You know, for example, I got woken up at 5:00 o'clock this morning, and I was trying to pull up. I gotta, you know, when Bill put this out on the listserv that this was going to be a discussion tonight, I immediately got a woman who said, oh, that's a, you know, we have to remember to always close our windows Sunday night because we get woken up at 5:00 in the morning on Monday. And so, you know, that's the kind of, that's the kind of feedback I get, and it's annual, you know. Come spring, when people start opening their windows again, like my window was open this morning, the complaints are going to start up.
And can I ask, so of course, you know, I also hear the trash collection at, I don't know, 4:30 or something, but my sleeping quarters aren't near my trash can. Are they coming down an alley that's right behind the houses on your block?
No, there are no alleys in the, there are no alleys. Yeah, and in the Westerbana neighborhood, most of the houses are closer to the street. You know, 15-foot setback is very typical.
I don't mind if I get wakened up at 4:30 if I know I can go back for two more hours of sleep.
Many of us can't.
Many of us can't, okay. That's usually when I have my best dreams.
Other comments for you or not? Yes?
Again, the haulers could speak if I'm mispoking here, but at a recent meeting we had, as far as the start time, Levitt's was, you know, kind of 4:30 in the morning, Chris's 5:45-ish in the morning, Mondays and Thursdays. Schaefer, although they start at midnight, and Champagne, they're in Urbana around 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning. So those were some of the haulers specifically that are, you know, pre-6 o'clock, if you will, that self-reported that information.
Mayor Pressing.
We talked about this, and it seemed like it was just in one part of the city where the, most of the complaints were. There are not a lot of complaints, so I called every council member to see what they wanted to do, and came up with this concept that if it's only in one area, maybe we should isolate that area. But that's why we've invited the haulers here, because we want to know how it's going to affect your operations. Sounds like it wouldn't affect everyone's operations, but just the ones that really start early. Is that correct?
Mr. Smythe.
Yeah, maybe this will get the conversation started. You know, so the third map, map three, is a zone which includes all of the complaints. Is the idea that haulers would be able to operate as they currently operate, starting at whatever time they want to start, but they would stay out of this particular geographical area as identified before 6:00 a.m.?
That's how this is drafted.
They, yeah, stay out of there before 6:00 a.m. So after 6:00 a.m., they could go into this area. So does that work? Is that enough of an adjustment here to allow you to work around the zone where people are complaining and not have to make too many adjustments other than maybe adjusting routes?
Well, my only concern was when I came into town, I seen there was 41,250 people in Urbana, and we're actually doing this over seven complaints on the map. It just seems like a big waste of time for everybody else. I mean, I don't see the point in it over seven complaints. My main question would be, out of everybody up here, if Mr. Smythe wasn't one of the one, main ones, would we even be concerned on this matter? Would it even be a matter?
Can, I wonder if I could ask, well, I'm sorry, could, Charlie, could you take the chair? So I wonder if I could ask a question. So I think the exercise that we want to go through is see if we can designate a zone that would provide for later pickups in that zone, but would still permit you guys to get your work done.
Well, like I said, it's not really me, that's, it doesn't really affect me too bad, but I don't see the point in it over the minimal complaints. I mean, people will complain more to us when they don't get the garbage picked up when they want it.
Sure.
I mean, I've had customers tell me that I'm their alarm clock that day of the week. They know when to get up, what time I'm there, and everything. Then you change that, then you get us in different traffic areas at different times, and you get more complaints for traffic. I mean, it just, I don't see the point over a minimal amount of complaints.
Which hauling company are you?
I'm with Chris's Service.
You're with Chris's, and you come at 5:45 to begin with, right?
I leave my shop in July at 5:30.
Yeah, so you don't start collection until 6:00 a.m. more or less.
About 5:45.
5:45, and probably at the edge of town, too, right?
Right.
Yeah. See, so your company isn't really one of the ones generating complaints.
No.
Exactly. So, and, so the 6:00 a.m. restriction really doesn't affect you one way or the other.
The only way it affects me right now is it's my dinnertime, and I'm sitting here at a meeting.
Yeah, well, yeah, likewise. So, yeah, let me, let me take the, well, actually, Charlie, if you can keep the chair again and recognize me for just a moment.
Yeah, keep going, yeah, sorry.
The, so, you know, I, you know, I appreciate your point. It is a small number of people, and the number of people who have registered complaints probably just about equals the number of people in the audience tonight.
Thank you.
So the democracy is sometimes inconvenient. We have an obligation to try to respond.
No, I understand.
To the people who live in our wards.
Right.
And, you know, we've created sort of an imposition on you all, but, but if we possibly can, if we possibly can figure out how, you know, if these complaints are as, you know, are in as narrow geographical area as they seem, what we're hoping to do, if we possibly can, is leave with everybody happy, except over missing dinner.
That's not ever going to happen.
Or the largest number of people happy.
Right. No, I understand, but I mean, yeah.
Okay.
It's just hard to get everybody in agreement. You're always going to have complaints.
Okay, well, anyway, Charlie, I'll take the chair back.
Okay, yeah.
I'll take the chair back and shut up.
Right, and that if I could be recognized.
Sure, okay, Charlie.
Yeah, I think the issue here is that we individually get complaints from our constituents. Those aren't mapped here. Okay? I'd have to go through 20 years of email to bring up all of the complaints. And, you know, it's not an easy matter of finding the right search terms and all that. You're just going to have to take my word for it, that I get complaints every spring when the windows open, you know, why are we having hauling, you know, before, why are we having hauling before the noise ordinance kicks in? Most of my constituents want 7:00 a.m. Most of my constituents, and I voted against it lowering, they want 8:00 a.m. Okay? They didn't want any noise before, they didn't want the noise ordinance reduced to 7:00 a.m. I had to, you know, I voted against it, but that's the, that's the rule now. Okay? And so my constituents would like 7:00 a.m. as the start time for hauling.
Well, I thought your lady friend had a great solution. She shut her doors, windows, Sunday night. I mean, it really wasn't.
Yes and, yes and no. Okay, I still get, you know, even with my windows closed, I get woken up. Okay? So, and I'm not exactly a light sleeper, but, you know, that backup thing at 4:30 in the morning, or the sound of glass and cans being dumped at 5:00 in the morning, just wake me up. And that's the wrong time to woken up. A lot of people are like me, and that's what they say, they can't get back to sleep, or they've got young children.
But there's so much more that aren't like you, apparently, that are not complaining. I don't see the point.
Yeah, I know, but it, but that's not how this works. Okay? Noise ordinances apply for those small occasions, those small times when things happen. That's the point here, okay?
I think, I'm going to intervene here because I don't think that council should be debating public. We should be, yeah, but, but we should, I think, I think, okay, in any case, I think probably, we can return to this, but I'm not sure that any new, anything new is going to come out of this exchange. Okay.
I just wanted to say that, I mean, even if it was only seven complaints, those seven people are very important, and I understand that they shouldn't be woken up in the morning. But at the same time, I think that we should let the process work itself out, have either them, or one of you, or the city, call and say, your company was on this street, or don't even say the company, send it to all the haulers and say, this person complained right here, what can we do? What was the complaint? Was it a dumpster dropping? Was it the backup alarm? Was it the brakes? What was it that we can do to try and fix it? Because I think that, again, even in that small of an area, you're still encompassing hundreds of people. And on one of the maps, where it's kind of an arbitrary line drawn over a giant part of Urbana, has hundreds of my customers in it. And I would literally, even, even in the most, even in the smallest one, I would have to completely break my route up and completely redo it, in which case I'm going to have customers calling and saying, you picked me up at 6:00, and now you're picking me up at 7:15, you know, like, or, you know, you picked me, you know. So people get really used to a certain thing, and when you start changing a bunch of stuff, it throws a lot of stuff out. And I just, I feel like this is a big step to, you know, minimize, to have just a few people, you know, not complain. But I, the complaints are important, but I just think that we need to have a different way of approaching it.
Diane.
Well, I think we need to be strategic about this if we're going to do anything, and map number three is overkill. To have this, this is way too big of an area to stretch over to incorporate one, apparently one complaint somewhere in east Urbana, and Stone Creek, okay.
Not my ward.
In my ward, I've had a total of, I've had several complaints, but they have all dealt with a pickup at Yankee Ridge School, and I've dealt with that along with the superintendent of schools calling the hauler directly, and I think we finally got that resolved. But, but that was a direct interaction between the specific company at a particular.
Which works.
Location. And it, eventually it worked. It took a while, but eventually it worked so far. So map number three is just way, way overkill. And I would still like to know, how many companies are we talking about, and, and if they have actually been contacted individually about these complaints?
So when staff receives a complaint, we take whatever information, or as much information as we can from the complainant. If the hauler is identified, we contact that hauler specifically. If a hauler is not identified, then we send communications to all the licensed haulers. And what our practice has been for years and years, whether it's the individual hauler or all haulers we're contacting, is to notify them that a complaint was made, where it was made, the time it was made, and to request that they consider rerouting their operations away from that area to a later time in the day, because at present, we don't have any, you know, operating hours. So it's merely a courtesy request.
And is it the backup beeping that's causing the problem, or is it the?
Sometimes it's a backup beeping, sometimes it's just the vehicle going down the street, sometimes it's a vehicle hitting a can that it's going to pick up with a mechanical arm.
For commercial pickup of the dumpsters, that, does that happen more than one day a week? Does that happen several days a week?
Yeah, I think commercial pickup is, is really any day.
Okay, because that's one of the main complaints I've had, is someone with a commercial dumpster being dropped. And then there are people that just, you know, with the number of trucks going down the street, if there's one every 20 minutes, you get woke up every 20 minutes, that's, that's hard even for one day a week. I did have another question about the way the amendments were, did it, I mean, I thought it meant that it would, we would be setting 6:00 a.m. for everybody and some other time on Monday mornings. Did I read that wrong? Because there's XX a.m. on Monday, so what are we thinking about?
Oh, that's a, well, my intention was to not, not prescribe any particular start time, but let that be up for discussion, and I missed the other 6:00 a.m. there. So, yeah, the intention was for that to be open for discussion, but not suggested. So those two, that XXX and the 6:00 a.m. should be the same time in a final ordinance.
So even outside the restricted zone, we would have a 6:00 a.m. start time?
No, no, no. I don't, well, that, that could be up for discussion. It could be any time outside of the particular zone and a, and a specific time within the zone.
Okay, and then as far as, okay, so we aren't making a difference in between days, because I was going to say that the restricted zone seems to be split between two days, two pickup days. And I thought earlier we talked about maybe just making the Monday, the whole Monday area different times start, but.
There's some Wednesday, too.
There's some Wednesday, too.
Yeah, I, originally, I mapped, I mapped the complaints with both the residential collection day zones and the wards, and no existing zonings matched up with the complaints well.
Yeah.
So it wasn't, you know, we were, I was hoping that, you know, you know, Monday's collection zone or Ward Two or whatever might line up really well with where the complaints were, and that would be very easy, or at least straightforward, to pass an ordinance for that particular area, but that did not happen when we mapped it.
I agree that the third map just seems pretty arbitrary, because there was one complaint in Stone Creek to include a bunch of houses in between. But then even, even the regular restriction zones seemed to only, in some ways, just reward in the people who have a network of complaints. I think I brought this up last time, but a lot of people didn't, didn't agree. I think if there are some complaints there, there's probably people in other parts of town experienced the same thing. But, so it seems to me like 6:00 o'clock would be a reasonable start time. I don't know how I feel about this special zone, except for discussion.
Yeah, Dennis?
I guess we're talking solution or something. Probably the smallest zone is probably the most efficient. Even Zone Two extends four or five streets past a complaint area, so what's the thing, what's the public works thinking about dropping it all the way down to Florida Avenue?
Yeah, staff wanted to present a couple of different options for council, council's consideration. The first option is clearly the most compact and narrowly construed. The second option extends from that to encompass the boundaries of that residential neighborhood. And the third option extends with only the intent to encompass all the complaints that we have a record of.
And there seems to be one complaint up on, is it Franklin?
Franklin.
Franklin. And has that, is that been a repeated complaint, or we just have a single complaint? And if it's only a single complaint, I think I'd suggest just eliminating that from the zone, because it's not in a, it's not in the target area, if you want to call it that, of concerns. And I appreciate the fact that we're mapping every complaint, but I think we should be addressing, you know, the areas that have the highest quality, quantity of issue. So, I mean, I would recommend thinking about the zone, if we're going to, if we're going to adopt in a zone at all, and it might be done as a trial basis, that we consider Map One excluding Franklin and see where it takes us next.
So I always think about unintended consequences. If you restrict pickups to 6:00 a.m. or later in this zone, what does that mean for the neighboring areas? Does it mean you'll just change your route to accommodate that zone?
I guess it depends on if this passes or not, and then I'd have to look at how, whether I, whether I would be better to start later or to change my route. And either way, it's, it's a pretty big move, so.
Charlie, could you take your, yeah. So, so I'd like to ask haulers, the area, let's see, do you have the Map One in front of you, or is that in front of them, Scott?
It's the, yeah, it'll be the first map if you scroll up.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I only, I have a Mac.
Good for you. We all should have Mac. Great.
I haven't used a Windows computer for a while.
Okay, so, so this, this is the, this is the most compact of the zones in question, and, you know, I never say what I, how I would decide to vote until I do it, but it, but because it's compact, it would have the least disruption. But what I'm wondering about, as far as the haulers are concerned, is this an area where you, in fact, as, as it happens, you in fact do pick up earlier, or is it just an area where there?
I would say for me, for the most part, I'm, I'm in that area on Monday or Wednesday between 5:00 and 6:00.
Okay.
So.
I guess, I guess, because I guess I'm wondering, I mean, I'm just referring, thinking about Diane's point, if this just happens to be an air, if we're getting complaints from there, because that's where the pickups are earlier.
Uh-huh.
Then that might well result, you know.
Well, in actuality, there are other parts of the city that I pick up far earlier.
Oh, okay.
And I don't get any complaints.
And you don't get complaints, okay.
So.
So the thing that I love about that map is it would take care of all the complaints in my ward. So if you guys would be happy, I would be happy, too. But the, but I, but, but I guess, I guess really the question is then, if, if we looked at this map, okay, and I think that you all, you all ought to actually have a chance to look at and comment on any maps that the staff draws and is considering. But the question is, yeah, it might be, it might be a, you know, you'd have to go back and redo your maps and people would, routes, and people would get their garbage picked up at slightly different times. I guess if I'm going to say, oh, somebody is unhappy because they got woken up early, or somebody is disoriented because their garbage picked up at a different time, I would, I would defer to the people who get woken up earlier. I think that's a more serious inconvenience.
Well, I, I think the thing is, it, the garbage business is kind of a strange business. Like, I think I said this before, it's, it's a relatively thank, thankless job. We do have a lot of great customers that appreciate us very much, and we're very pleased about that. But it's one of those things where you could, you could potentially have somebody quit and go to another service over something as small as that.
Yeah.
So it's just, it's, you know, I can understand we're coming from someone else's perspective, like it wouldn't be that big of a deal. But if I start losing customers, then, you know, it, to me, it is a big deal.
Do you think you might lose a customer because they, they feel that somebody else will pick up later and wake them up?
Oh, yes.
So it could go both ways.
Yeah, yeah. It could go, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I really, I, I, I just want to say that, and I hope I'm projecting it, that I really do respect what you guys do. I'm a, you know, I'm kind of on the left politically, and I'm very mindful of the fact that Martin Luther King's last road trip was on behalf of garbage men. So, you know, it's really important. So, so we've got to work it out in a good way. I, I guess, I, I guess I would like to, yeah, I guess, I guess for me, for me, you know, I would really, yeah, I would really like to have, have you guys respond to whatever map it looks as though we might go on and, and see, with the understanding it's going to involve some change for you and your customers, but can you live with it in the sense that you can keep your guys out of the heat of the sun in the summer, which I think is a really important thing?
I, I, yeah, I was going to say...
And get, and get to, get to where you have to take your stuff before the deadline.
Like, when they, when they do the extreme weather, the heat and the cold, now, my guys like to get there and leave at like 3:30 in the morning, because they get out of the sunshine by 10 or 11 before the peaks. Now, I don't know if you guys were considering putting in like an extreme weather clause? You know, in the winter, if there's going to be a blizzard coming in at eight or nine, we do try to get out there before the storms. I just didn't know if that was something you guys were going to consider to put in there? You know, because it is rough out there. And they're running around picking up heavy garbage and out the smelliest, or, you know, smelling.
My, my sense is, I'll, I'll just say this, and then I'll give the, then I'll take the chair back and shut up. But my sense is that we could probably write an extreme weather clause. If, if there's a winter storm coming in, if there's extreme heat predicted for a particular day, I, I think, well, my personal sense is, but it'd be up to everybody here, that we could, we could, we could write, we could write something in. Okay. And I'll take the chair back.
I know Dennis wants to...
Dennis? I'm looking at the map, and I see that you have two complaints in Ward Two. One of them is on Main Street, and one looks like they're on Green Street. And so I'm wondering if rather than, like, you know, making a two-thirds of your ward become the map, you know, shall we just address the street upon which there is an issue? Can we say that, okay, for the, for the, the hauler industry, you know, make, can we make an adjustment for those people who collect on Main Street or on Green Street? You know, adjust your time schedule? That would probably be the least imposition. Now, it might throw off, you know, the general collection up and down the street, because you probably go in a grid pattern. But I'm just trying to imagine ways that we can solve a problem with the least amount of mapping, if we're going to take a map at all.
Well, I'm sure those complaints on the Green Street area were probably right close to campus town, where the campus housing is and they have dumpsters and everything. So I'm sure those were mostly complaints on dumpsters.
Yeah.
Can I ask Scott a question? So, when, when we, when you guys receive complaints, do you ever, like, do you figure out, like, the day of the, the week that they're on? Because obviously, if they're on Thursdays and Fridays, it wouldn't, you know, be residential. And then, I just, I, I'm wondering if there needs to be a way that we take the complaints that we can figure out what sector is, is causing it, what day of the week, and how, you know, how best to fix it, you know? And, and then my other question was, is, do you, of these complaints, are any of them older than three or four years old?
To your, to your second question, yes. I, I don't remember the oldest ones. I'd have to look at the database. But yeah, as long as we've been collecting and recording these type of complaints. To your first question, we collect as much data as we can based on the complaint.
Okay.
But everything that we put in a computer database is, well, most things that we put in a computer database are FOIA-able. And so some folks don't want to disclose everything. Sometimes a different person gets the message and has never taken that type of complaint before, and so they don't collect as much as what, you know, others would collect. So it's, it's not, it's not, you know, a full complement of information.
Okay. Because the, two reasons why I asked you about, like, the, the timeline, you know, obviously people move out. So, I mean, if somebody, you know, complains, and then somebody moves out and somebody else moves in and they don't have a complaint, then we've got a dot on the map for no reason. And then, the other thing I was going to say was, how many times has somebody complained and then had that complaint been resolved and then never had that be a problem again? So it's, there's, there's more, I feel like there's more to everything than, you know...
Yeah, Diane.
This is a moving target, because if a home is sold or apartment building is sold, they may change haulers, and then these dots could go away. And, and did you say that there were just two a year?
It's something like that, yeah. It's just a couple a year. That staff receives.
That you have received.
Correct.
Which I think that was something we talked about last time. I think that if we decided to keep it the way it is by some, hopefully that's what we do, but anyway, if we decide to keep it the way it is, I'm hoping that every single complaint goes to Scott, no matter what, and then it comes to us, so we can do something about it. Because if, if we don't hear about it, then nothing gets done, so.
Okay. So we, yes, Charlie?
Okay, yeah. So I've got four, four things here. The reason we're back into this discussion last year is because the self-policing mechanism broke down and isn't working. Leo School was much, was generating a lot of the complaints, and that was solved, and it was at the same time as Yankee Ridge, so that was solved. I'm sure that my constituents would have no trouble with an extreme weather provision, you know, more than such and such a heat or a blizzard is coming and the, and the, you know, the Public Works Director designee gives a blessing to it. You know, boom, boom. I think that's, that's totally, totally doable and, and totally in there. The idea of 6:00 AM, like I said, to me is a compromised time, recognizing that you guys need to get out there earlier than, than even people who are working in backhoes and on roofs at seven o'clock. You know, the noise, the noise ordinance was lowered because of, of, of needing to get started, and, and many, many construction schedules start earlier anyway. So there's a recognition of that. So I think, you know, my constituents have lived with it. The last thing I wanted to say is I think, I'm going to try to do some searches here and bring up some numbers. It may take me a while. But the, the map, map, Map One, I think, is a little too limited because of what I know and where I know the complaints coming from that aren't going to Scott. You know, people complain to us, and they want the problem solved. They don't call the city because they, you know, it's like, some of them feel like they're beating their heads against the wall, the city won't pay attention, and they don't want to give their name. And so, to me, the map, you know, originally, we talked about just Ward One as being the exclusion zone, but that, you know, is half university, half, and, and that half is, is probably no problem. It's, it's really Map Two, shrunken a little bit, that represents probably the core of the West Urbana neighborhood, where the houses are close to the street. And, you know, if, if anything, that's a, a, a big piece of the, of the issue. And there is some mixed housing in there, so that there are trucks backing up and picking up and, and dropping dumpsters. So, so frankly, to me, a modified version of Map Two would be the area that I would want to try as a, a zone to give it a, you know, to see what happens.
Mayor Preston?
I think we need better data. So if someone calls a council member, the council member should refer the address and everything to the Public Works Department, so that we can have a better database. But I really appreciate you coming and saying how it would affect you. So, thank you.
I've got some numbers. Just as a preliminary, just so you know, since 2000, I have 585 messages that have garbage in the body of the, of the text. That's the, you know, I, you know, have to do a more sophisticated search within that, but that's just since, since 2000. So over a 15, it'd be, yeah, given when it started, be 15-year period here, you know, there's, there's just regular, regular discussions.
Is that listserv?
That's on the listserv, yeah.
Okay. So those can be, being very familiar with the Wuna listserv, it could be, you know, one person commenting multiple times.
Yeah, that's what I say, yeah, yeah. That's what I say, you know, that's what I say, this has to be filtered, you know, that's just the preliminary first item search.
Okay.
And you'd have to take this down and figure out, now you have to go look at noise and see how many intersections there are, and it, the mail package I use doesn't, probably doesn't let me get to the level of sophistication I need to do. I probably have to pull this out and do a different kind of search on it.
I would also add, if you're going to be doing a weather-related clause, we should think about apartment move-in and move-out dates, because that weekend, August, is when some haulers have to make multiple trips to, to buildings, and that's a factor. So that's, you know, the August 15th to the first part of school. Then there's holidays. Sometimes pickup dates may be adjusted for that.
Yeah, extreme weather, move-in, holidays.
I just...
So I, I guess, Scott, do you have, well, actually, I guess I'd like to pass it to Charlie and make one more comment. I guess, I guess the other comment I'd like to make is, you know, I guess, I'm in favor of a zone. I'm in favor of drawing the zone relatively, as small as possible, to accommodate the complaints, but it's got to be small enough to, you know, still enable the haulers to make schedule adjustments that, that will accommodate the needs that they have to finish in a timely fashion each day. The, but the other procedural suggestion I'd like to make is that if, if we do, if we do pursue, I, I don't know if we, I don't know if the, the zoning concept, if it's really the sense of the council to continue to pursue the concept of, of this memo or not. And I wonder if we could get a straw vote that, that we actually want to continue the process, Bill?
I, I guess I'd just comment on, as far as the specific, where the specific complaints are and the grouping, the only, I can only see two reasons it would be grouped there, either because there's a lot of neighborhood chat, and, you know, once somebody complains, other people start understanding how to, how the complaint process works, they might be more likely to complain. Or like Charlie says, it's because of some neighborhood characteristic, like maybe this, the house is being near the road. So I think it, it's probably not right to get too detailed about exactly where the dot is and draw a zone around the dot. But if we're going to do a zone, I think it does make sense to kind of try it in a, as a neighborhood zone that would incorporate the physical characteristics of the, of that neighborhood and, and give it a try. But I don't know if we have support to even do that, but that would probably be as, as much as I would want to do right now.
So could we get a, a sense of the council, you know, this is informal now, but except it's important that, on whether, whether we wish to continue the process of considering a zone? Is, is that, is that okay to do, Madam Clerk? I'm not breaking any rules?
Actually, this item is on the agenda for the next meeting, so if you wanted to make your straw poll at that time, you can right now. It's just for discussion, and you shouldn't do that.
Shouldn't do that, okay. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll refrain from doing that for now, then, from asking for that now. Yes, oh, joy, we'll actually revisit it tonight yet. So, is there any other, any other discussion on this? Well, okay, but I will, I will say one thing. If we do continue this process, I think that as we draft maps, I think we ought to engage the, the, the trash haulers, so that they can take a look at, at what we're proposing and, and think about it, as opposed to, you know, sort of springing it on them, and, and then having them required to adjust to it very, very rapidly. And, you know, probably, well, I don't know. We'll just have to see. It may very well be that something's got to be done, but hopefully we can make it as, as least disruptive to your business models and your business conduct as, as we possibly can, and still, still satisfy our residents who are also your customers. Does that, how, does that sound like a politician? Yes, Dennis?
What did you say?
So it must, it must indeed sound like a politician. So, and some of the fellows that are here from the trash haulers who are just kind of listening and haven't spoken, maybe during the next meeting, when we have this on, on the agenda again, it'd be great for you all to express yourselves. I mean, unless you're in, unless you're content with the conversation the way it's going. I mean, it's always good to hear from you, when you certainly are hearing from us. So if you haven't spoken, you feel like you ought to, you have an option to do that again in a couple minutes.
Yeah, Bill?
So as we consider crafting a zone, whatever that zone would be, I think we also have to think about is if we implement this zone, and let's assume for a moment it's 6:00 AM, the rest of Urbana is unregulated. So do we look at, as we get complaints in other areas of the city because of early start, of early times, will this zone morph and change as those complaints come in? That's something to think about.
Yeah.
Because they will, they will happen. The calls will come in. So does each call have equal weight to then modify that zone as it morphs, and who knows what kind of direction? So I don't have, I don't expect a response, but I think we have to think about that, too.
Yeah, Diane.
Can I ask, did I hear you say that you are picking up at those early hours in other parts of Urbana as well? Or is it just in this particular neighborhood?
I am, yes.
Okay.
In other parts of Urbana, yes, earlier, actually.
Okay.
Okay. If, if we have exhausted this item, I think there's no further business before this meeting, so I'll declare that we're adjourned.